Okay. Let's officially call the meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, May 8th, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Sure will. Deborah Feimster?
Here.
Veronica Frankel?
Here.
Katie Simon-Holland?
Here.
Scott Kelly?
Here.
John Mayer here. Melena. (laughing) Melena Drayman?
Here.
That's, I have to always say, like Galena.
Right.
Angela Taylor?
I'm here.
And Alex is not here.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Mayer. And we will have the Pledge of Allegiance escorted by our color guard tonight, which is Cameron Bishop, Miranda Mullins, Vanessa Gomez-Castro, and Larissa Gaeta. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) Left, right, march out. March. Left. Color guard. Left. Face. Hand. Salute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right. Move out. House Leader.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Chief.
And we are so proud of our JROTC here at Reed and throughout the district. They do a tremendous job with the color guard, so thank you very much. Okay, we will go on to public comment. JJ, do we have public comment this evening?
Ross Golden.
Ross Golden. Thank you, sir. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chairman Holland and the rest of the board. My name is Dr. Ross Golden. I am the Medical Director of Reno Diagnostic Centers and a founder of Reno Diagnostic Centers. RDC is Northern Nevada's only independent, non-hospital-owned imaging center. As a way of background, we see approximately 65,000 patients a year. We have 120 employees. We have two locations, both in Reno. I'm speaking to you today in regards to a very important decision that you will be faced with in the upcoming months: the selection of a health plan for your members. I realize this item is not on the agenda today, but my understanding is the board will be receiving a final recommendation on this issue in August, and I feel it is imperative that you give it the thought and discussion that it deserves. I am hearing from calling, colleagues, that Nevada Business Group on Health is no longer accepting bids, and that their recommendation will be to automatically renew the existing Hometown Health Plan offering. Are you aware that the HHP offering is exclusive, and providers such as Reno Diagnostic Centers, St. Mary's, St. Mary's Medical Group, Northern Nevada Medical Center, Northern Nevada Medical Group physicians are excluded from this plan, depriving your 12,000-plus members from the opportunity of choice in using their service? During my 35 years as a practicing radiologist in Reno, I've had several opportunities to witness what exclusivity in healthcare does to patient choice and healthcare costs. It is not good. In the long run, exclusivity by reducing competition drives up costs, drives down quality. It is a lesson that we all learned back in school. Renown has stated that their focus is to improve healthcare in our community and reduce costs. Yet HHP is the only payer in Reno that won't contract with RDC to provide care for their patients, despite RDC being widely recognized as Northern Nevada's leader in medical imaging, as well as the region's lowest cost provider. RDC promotes patient choice. We do not own a healthcare insurance plan to provide us a steady stream of guaranteed patients. RDC has remained successful these past 33 years by providing value to our patients. I believe if we had had the luxury of exclusive contracts, our value to our patients and our community would be diminished. I would encourage this board to reconsider the renewal of HHP and consider other options. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Golden.
Richard Bryan.
Dr. Bryan, welcome. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. For the record, my name is Richard Bryan. I have been a practicing cardiologist in Northern Nevada for 21 years. I recently completed a two-year term as Chief of Staff at St. Mary's Hospital, and currently have the honor of serving as Chairman of the Board. I want to thank the Board for allowing me to present the St. Mary's quality data and give you an idea of what the culture is like at St. Mary's and how we improve on our data, quality data, on a day-to-day basis. We have recently received a four-star ratings from the Center for Medicare and Medicaid, the only acute care hospital in the entire state to receive that distinction. Additionally, last month, we received a letter grade A from Leapfrog. But this is not our first letter grade A. In fact, this is the first time in a row that we were awarded this grade, in fact, the only hospital in the state that can make such a claim. Based on our quality data, in 2017, we received a top hospital award from Leapfrog, naming us as one of only one of 45 general hospitals in the entire country to receive such an award. These quality scores have real meaning. Among other things, the results mean you will be less likely to be hospitalized for an infection, develop a blood clot, or be readmitted to the hospital for a subsequent episode of care. These accolades do not come without a lot of really hard work. I want to share with you the culture at St. Mary's which allows us to provide such quality care. Our hospital is owned by a physician. Our CEO is a registered nurse, and our volunteer governing board has a large number of physicians on it for multiple specialties. This leadership structure has sent a message that permeates our organization that high-quality, patient-centered care is the single most important thing we do each and every day. Let me give you two examples. In our intensive care units, we have a team which rounds on each patient every day, 365 days a year. This team includes physicians specifically trained in critical care medicine, hospital-based physicians, nurses including the patient's bedside nurse, pharmacy staff, dieticians, physical therapists, speech therapists, and social workers. And this is the key point: every member of that team is empowered to participate in the care of the patient in a collegial, non-threatening environment. No matter how trivial an issue may seem, team members are encouraged to voice their concerns so that we can provide the best possible care to our patients. A second example is our discharge lounge, a concept pioneered by our Chief Nursing Officer, Katie Grimm. When a patient leaves the hospital, they are most vulnerable. We have a specific area within the hospital to make that transition from inpatient to outpatient care as seamless as possible. As you can see, the quality scores that St. Mary's have achieved do not come by accident. Our organization is driven to provide the best possible care possible. As you embark on your journey to choose healthcare for your beneficiaries, the question I would ask is why?
You need to wrap up.
Why would you not offer St. Mary's the highest-rated hospital care in the area as a choice to your members? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan.
Helen Lindholm.
Ms. Lindholm, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm going to try to make up for some of the time here. President Simon-Holland, Trustee Superintendent Davis. For the record, my name is Helen Lindholm. I'm a registered nurse and CEO of St. Mary's Health Network, which consists of St. Mary's Regional Medical Center and St. Mary's Medical Group. The Dominican Sisters of Santa Rafael started St. Mary's in 1908, so this year, we are celebrating our 110th anniversary. Over 2,500 individuals work at St. Mary's and live in our community. We're led by a local community board. We're a family with deep roots in our community. Since 1908, St. Mary's has always prided itself for caring for the members of this community, and have always held the belief that quality is at the forefront of everything that we do. In the past five and a half years, we have invested $108 million back into St. Mary's Health Network and our community in equipment, technology, buildings, staffing, and provider expansions, all to increase access and improve quality and outcomes for our patients. We are a proud taxpayer, and we have paid over $17 million in taxes to our state, county, city, school district, et cetera, also in the past five and a half years. These taxes have gone to support local schools, public safety, development of roads, and other needed services. As we mentioned in the letter we submitted to you in March from our board, we have reached out to the Nevada Business Group on Health or Coalition since last year, asking to be at the table and to be given the opportunity to be part of the bidding process for your current healthcare agreement that does expire this year at the end of 2018. We advocate for choice, and we would just like to have a seat at the table. St. Mary's is committed to continuously providing exceptional care and performance, as evidenced by our highly-rated, nationally-recognized service lines. Thank you for allowing me to address you today, and I urge you to offer choice to your members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindholm.
Alan Smith.
Welcome, Mr. Smith. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me your time this evening. My name is Alan Smith. I am the Chief Financial Officer for St. Mary's Health Network. I recently read the Washoe County School District report, it was published in April, on the status of the Health Insurance Fund. I believe this report here. And if I understand it correctly, the Health Insurance Fund has a projected shortfall in revenues of about $22.5 million. The assumptions that were included in this projection were annual increases in premium rates of 10% per year for 2019, 2020, and 2021. In the nine months ended March 31, 2018, medical expenses have increased 6 million or 17% over the prior year. By comparison, from 2015 until 2017, the city of Reno's medical expenses increased 10% or 2.2 million. Hometown Health, Renown, which represents about 42% of the city's medical expenses, increased 1.9 million or 22% in that time period. The other 58% of the city's medical expenses, including St. Mary's Health Network, increased only 2% or $317,000 in that same two-year period of time. As you've already heard, St. Mary's Health Network was recently awarded four stars for quality by Medicare and a grade A for safety from the Leapfrog Group, the fourth in a row. St. Mary's is the only network in the state of Nevada to receive these accolades. Medicare recognizes hospitals that focus on optimizing patient outcomes and experiences, knowing that hospitals that develop and promote quality improvement provide better care, lower costs, and improve health overall. St. Mary's continues to focus on quality and our patients' outcomes and experiences because we know this not only improves the health of the people that we serve, it also lowers the cost of healthcare. We would greatly appreciate the opportunity to apply the lessons we have learned and the value of care that we provide to the members of the Washoe County School District. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Katie Grimm.
Ms. Grimm, welcome.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Katie Grimm, and I'm the Chief Nursing Officer at St. Mary's. St. Mary's has spent many years focusing on building a culture that provides high-quality, patient-centered care. We were once again validated by Leapfrog, a national patient-safety watchdog organization, with our fourth letter A grade in a row. According to Leapfrog, your risk of death at a hospital with a C-letter grade is 35% higher than a hospital with an A. We are also the only hospital in Nevada to achieve four stars from the Center for Medicare and Medicaid. Our leaders drive this culture. St. Mary's is owned by a physician. Our CEO is a registered nurse. Our governing board has a large number of physicians for multiple specialties. They feel strongly that their job is to listen and support our team so that we can provide high-quality care each and every day. We want your beneficiaries to have a choice in accessing St. Mary's. I believe your employees and families will experience fewer complications, shorter hospital stays, and fewer rehospitalizations, all of which adds up to a true cost savings for Washoe County School District. We will provide you with the best care at the best price. I hope in the next benefit year, your members will have the opportunity to choose St. Mary's. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grimm.
Crystal Flanikin.
Crystal, did we pronounce your name even close?
It was close.
Is it Flanikin?
Flanikin.
Flanikin, okay. Thank you. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Crystal Flanikin, and I am the Director of Surgical Services at St. Mary's Hospital. I am here today to talk about quality of care that we provide. I have worked at this hospital for 28 years, which I am very proud to say. Our mission is to deliver compassionate quality care to patients and better healthcare to our communities. We are able to do that because of the longevity of our staff that are there in the OR. We work with no travelers in our operating room, and our executive team is literally side-by-side with us in the hallways. They're accessible. We can work with them collaboratively about our ideas to provide that high-quality care. St. Mary's Regional Medical Center received 25 awards by Health Grades, including America's 100 Best Hospitals for Orthopedic Spine and Prostate Surgeries. They evaluate hospital performance at nearly 4,500 hospitals nationwide for 34 of the most common inpatient procedures and conditions. St. Mary's Medical Center has been recognized in the following areas: we are one of Health Grades America's 100 Best Hospitals for Orthopedic Surgery, for Spine Surgery, and for Prostate Surgeries. For Orthopedics, we are the recipient of Health Grades Orthopedic Surgery Excellence Award, our Spine Surgery Excellence Award. We are top five in the nation for overall orthopedic services, spine services, and 10% in the nation for overall orthopedic services for three years in a row. We were named among the top 10% in the nation for spine surgery, and we are five-star recipients as well for total hip replacement, not total knee replacement, excuse me, hip fracture treatment, back surgery, and spinal fusion for two years in a row. I could go on and on, naming all of the accolades that we received from Health Grades, along with our four-star CMS and our Leapfrog ratings. The report that came out from Health Grades demonstrates how clinical performance continues to differ dramatically between hospitals regionally and nationally. This variation in care has a significant impact on healthcare outcomes. I would also like to say that receiving all these Health Grades, it's truly the direct work of our staff and their hands-on approach to patient care. This is not something that we get to alter in our Health Grades awards and any of the other awards that we receive. This is truly publicly-reported data, and it's the hard work that our staff contribute to every single day. They'll speak more about this later, but we do have a very low infection rate in our OR, 0.1% out of over 7,000 patients that we treated last year in 2017. Thank you for giving me the time to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Flanikin.
Alana Bellstrom and Carmen Bean.
Alana and Carmen, welcome.
Hello. My name is Alana Bellstein, and I'm here to talk to you about the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit. So I wanted to bring to your guys' attention, along with the rest of the hospital, that we do have a high quality of standard, that we fall in line with the rest of the hospital. We have not had a central line infection in 10 years, or a ventilator-associated infection in nine years. And so that is a huge accomplishment, and so we're very proud of that. We work really hard, and we want to bring to light our unit because the families that we treat and care for there, they become our family. So, thank you for your time, and I encourage you guys to allow your members to have choice.
Hello. My name is Carmina. I am Transport Coordinator for St. Mary's NICU. We transport sick babies from outlying communities to provide a higher level of care. Our small team takes pride of our high quality of care. We provide basically a mobile ICU unit for little babies. Sometimes they weigh less than a pound. I have been a nurse at St. Mary's for 23 years, so I take pride working there. Thank you for your time. Hopefully, you'll consider giving choices for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sean Sullivan.
Ms. Sullivan, welcome.
Hi, my name is Sean Sullivan, and I have been a nurse at St. Mary's for 32 years. Sounds like a long time. I also am a supporter of choice in healthcare. You guys have a really important decision to make when you make that decision, and I hope that quality does not get lost in that. Everybody looks at cost, and I understand that cost is important, and I understand that you have a responsibility to keep that under control. But if you don't look at quality and you don't look at that at the same time as cost, then you're just going to get what you pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Rochelle Nielsen.
Ms. Nielsen, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you for a few moments. For the record, my name is Rochelle Nielsen. I'm privileged to say that I am a graduate of the Washoe County School District system.
All right.
Hey, I graduated from Reno High School. I'm a lifelong Reno-born, you know, resident, and also graduated from the University of Nevada with my bachelor's in nursing. I have also been privileged, and this is one area that has really been helpful in my career, to have my master's degree in healthcare administration. And I know that one of the things that we have discussed a lot about healthcare is cost. But what I wanted to offer to you today was some insight on savings. And this has always been a frustration for me in healthcare because we don't capture the savings as routinely as I think that we should, and I think we should have more discussion about that. I currently am the Infection Preventionist at St. Mary's. I've been in this role for about 15 years. I've been an employee in various roles at St. Mary's for almost 35 years, but I also have worked at other competitor hospitals in our community. And I just wanted to share a few things with you. We have had tremendous success, and your members have benefited from the success that we've had in our infection prevention efforts. I went in and looked at some statistics related to costs of how much an infection costs, and I'm going to give you just one example. When we put a central line in a patient, which is that line that we put in those patients that go into critical care and they need intensive therapy and support during that time, we have the obligation to prevent any kind of infection that happens in those patients. And when you go back and calculate how much one of those infections would cost you, it comes to a little over $32,000. So if one of your members were to get that infection, it would cost about that amount to treat that infection. And I just want to share that we have had an 89% reduction in our central line rates over a five-period year period, excuse me, which was 2010 to 2015. And I know there's been discussion about whether or not our statistics are current or not. Since that time, we have reduced that down to zero. So far this year, and we're almost halfway through the year, we have not had a central line infection at St. Mary's. If you take that 89% reduction and equate that to money in terms of how much you have saved over that five-year period of time, that would be over a half a million dollars. And we've also achieved those savings by reducing infections in many other areas. We've had no urinary tract infections. This year, we've had no surgical site infections this year, as Crystal mentioned, in those important areas. And we continue with a multidisciplinary team to improve that care and prevent those infections so that your members are well taken care of and are safe at our facility. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Nielsen.
That's all I have at this time.
Is there anyone else who wanted to address us in public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Thank you all for sharing your thoughts with us, and thank you for the care that you provide to our community. You are all dedicated professionals, and we're grateful for that. Okay, we'll go to item 1.05, action to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Trustee Frankel.
Second.
Second by trustee Dr. Taylor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda items. We have items 2.01 is the approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone want to take anything out of the consent agenda? Okay, then we can just move for approval of the consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.15. Are there any questions on any of those, or is there any public comment? Okay, hearing no questions. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Dr. Feimster, second, and motion by trustee Dr. Taylor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may just, as always, those questions that were asked and the information shared, if we can add that to the record, it's really good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, and JJ, so noted.
Already done.
I knew you were on top of that. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to items under number three, and 3.01 is the informational presentation, an update by staff on the American Indian-Alaska Native Data Programs and Services. For information, discussion only. Presented by Tiffany Young, our Equity and Diversity Coordinator, and Chelsea Solemasas?
Solemasas.
Solemasas, thank you.
For the record.
The Indian Education Specialist, thank you. Go ahead, Tiffany. And I neglected to thank Reed High School for hosting us and Principal Rose Bloom. It's been wonderful to have you all make us welcome here, and it's wonderful to have the great Indian education program here. So we're delighted to be here to hear about that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Tiffany Young. I'm the Coordinator of Equity and Diversity, and I also supervise Indian education.
Yes, for the record, I'm Chelsea Solemasas, and I'm the Indian Education Specialist with the Equity and Diversity Department.
So we do want to say thank you to Reed as well for hosting the meet-and-greet, as well as the board meeting for today. Chelsea and I are going to cover some information for you. Chelsea's going to give you some programmatic overview, and then I will cover some information around the data for our Indian education program.
Okay. So our Indian education program is funded by the Title VI Formula Grant from the Office of Indian Education, U.S. Department of Education. And so our funding is based off of the number of students who've completed what we call a 506 form, or a Student Eligibility Certification Form. And so the students who are eligible for a 506 form are those who are the students themselves or their family members, so that can be their parents or their grandparents, who are tribally enrolled. And our programming, our Indian education programming, is determined in partnership with our Parent Advisory Committee, which is also known as our PAC. And so we are partnered with three of our tribal entities, and that is our Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, Reno Sparks Indian Colony, and Nevada Urban Indians. And so each partner has the ability to be a voting and ex officia member of the PAC or Parent Advisory Committee. And so our programming for Title VI includes, so first is our Paiute language classes, and that is in three of our high schools, so that's Spanish Springs High School, North Valley's High School, and here at Reed High School. And so our students can, any student can take this class and receive a world language credit. And so every year, at the end of the school year, we have our annual Paiute Language Bowl. And that actually, this year is going to be May 22nd, so all three schools will have a friendly competition to show us what they know in regards to the Paiute language class. And so, again, that's May 22nd at UNR. We also have flyers up here if anyone would like a flyer as well.
And as we presented earlier, you all have a copy of the language, and you have a written and oral copy as presentation to the board.
So great, and thank you for that. And this is really exciting to hear the language spoken by elders, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Of course. And so also, the programming includes, we pay for, or have the ability to pay for summer school supplemental credit fees, also advanced placement fees, as well as we provide tutoring out at Natchez Elementary School, as well as after-school busing. out at Natchez Elementary School, as well as after-school busing for our programs after school at Natchez Elementary. We also have advisement services, so we have two student graduation advocates that are in our comprehensive high schools, as well as a few of our middle schools. And so our student graduation advocates support our students and student achievement, and also cultural growth. We also implemented in the last couple of years the Infinite Campus tab, and so going back to that student eligibility certification form, that 506 form, we are able to input that information into Infinite Campus for our students, and so it's made it a lot easier for us to track data. And then lastly, I serve as a member of the Nevada Indian Commission's Indian Education Advisory Committee.
So the next piece of information that you all have is the data, and the one thing I will point out, I'm sure you all can see, is that each year we've had a decline in the number of students that we calculate for the grant. And again, the grant is funded per individual student. So a couple of factors are part of that. We know that now that we have the opportunity for our students to identify as multiracial, that's been a shift that changes in our tracking of numbers. Now that we have the Infinite Campus tab, Bren and Mary Martini have been extremely helpful with us trying to tabulate that data and extrapolate who are we missing. And so we've been working with Reno Sparks Indian Colony and Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe to talk about, well, how many students do you have on your list? How many do you have on your list? And making sure we're not missing students. But there has been a decline in the number of students that have been represented that have self-identified for that tribal recognition. So the year 1718, you can see that we had 868 students, and then for the 1819 school year, we'll have, what was the number?
The 868?
1819 school year. So you could see as we have a continue, yes?
I'm sorry, thank you, Tiffany. Just wanted to know, so if a student identifies as multiracial or biracial, then they don't qualify in the grant at all? The grant is just for those students that are...
No, that's a great question. So it's not that they don't qualify, it's the system. So the way our system triggers, if they put two categories in, and one of them may not be native, and it doesn't catch it in the system, and then they don't fill out the form. So the form is not a self-generating form, they still have to, the system will trigger for them to fill it out, but they still have to print it because we need a live signature. So it's not a perfect system. It's a better system than what we had before. Prior to Infinite Campus, we had an Excel spreadsheet, and we ran the risk of duplicating numbers in students. So now with Infinite Campus, we won't do that, but now we have to be better about pulling that data of multiracial students and doing additional outreach. So where we could just run our native students that are coded I in the system and send something out, now we have to look at multiracial and then pull apart that data, and then do an additional outreach to the populations that are within that category.
I see. Thank you.
Tiffany, have the tribal agencies seen a similar decline in population?
For some, but I can't speak for the tribal organizations. We've had some shift in numbers and changes, and we talked to Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe's High School, we've talked to other communities and see what's going on with shift in numbers in students, and a lot of it is really within the tracking of the system. So we're trying to be better about making sure we are not missing students on our end, and that people are accessing the form. And that's what's happening, is that form in Infinite Campus, although it's a better failsafe than we've had, we're still missing some people. So we've got to be a little bit more diligent in digging deeper into when we have students that register, and then working with our tribal partners to say, does your numbers match our numbers?
Okay, so perhaps from that high of 1432 and '08-'09, maybe some of the decline is due to a change in the system and the reporting and the way that kids are able to self-report?
Some is system, some is graduation, some are moving out of the community. I mean, there's various reasons. I wouldn't say that there's one single factor that attributes to the decline in the numbers.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? Okay, yeah, please go ahead, sorry.
So we just want to add that there are over 90 tribes from across the United States that are represented in the district, and other than the large Nevada Great Basin representative tribes, we have Cherokee, Navajo, Chepewa, and Nisou tribe. And so we're working hard to continue to strengthen relationships and share information, and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our students. We know that we are here for all of our kids, and specifically, as we work within the Title VI Indian education program, being intentional about the needs and working with the community and finding out what are the desires of our tribal partners so that we can meet the needs of our students and our families are key for us. The other piece of the data we want to say is that we have 66.5% of our students that are self-identified as American Indian-Alaska Native. We work really hard with Ben Hayes's department, they are awesome at helping us track data and pull apart information, and so we definitely appreciate that partnership because that's an information we can easily access, and so they are really great about helping us pull this together. And we want to let you know that the remainder of those students within that percentage fall within, as we said, Hispanic, Latino, white, black, Asian, Pacific Islander, Native Hawaiian, and multiracial. So it's not a simple tracking system, as people seem to think. It's not just you pull a number, and that gives you all the students. We have to look within all of those categories. The other piece that we want to say is around the self-identified. The data recorded in our district is based on what students and families, what families put in the system. So we are not the ones to say you cannot register as that, right? We are not the ones to tell a family what they can or cannot, but we cannot count the family if they have not completed a 506 form and they are not part of a federally recognized tribe. So based on how students and parents and guardians check the boxes, it says, are you Hispanic? No. What is your race? American Indian-Alaska Native only, and that will trigger us to be able to have some information in the system. If they select yes for Hispanic or include a Hispanic subgroup, sometimes they end up in that multiracial category, so you can see where it kind of gets a little tricky. And so we, again, work really hard with Ben's department to be able to collect that data. And again, if you look at the self-identified breakdown, you can see the shift in numbers that have changed. We have a count day in the Indian education program that is different from the district's count day, and we look at the highest number of enrollment throughout the year, and then we count from there to see which of our students are identified within that category, and you can see the percentages that have shifted over the year's time from 2007 to present 1718.
Can we go back one slide, just a second, because I want to make sure I'm understanding that last sentence, those students are not included in this data, so that's students that are selecting a multiracial, saying yes to Hispanic and something else?
Yes. So coded I is where most of our American Indian-Alaska Native students fall, but just because a student registers and is filtered into the coded I category does not mean that they have a 506 form and they have the tribal recognition. It's not, they're not the one and the same. So they may pick a category, and they may qualify, or they may pick a category and they may not.
Okay, so the ones that don't qualify via the 506 form are the ones that are not included in the data?
Exactly.
Thank you. Got it. Okay.
Great question. And then the last part of the data, well, not the last part, but the next part of the data around the self-identified, we have the breakdown for elementary, middle, high school, and just overall K through 12, the number of American Indian-Alaska Native students per category, the percentages that we have for the breakdown within the areas, whether it's elementary, middle, high school, K-12, and then the percentage of American Indian-Alaska Native students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. So we can see where number-wise, it is a small population, but just because the population is small doesn't mean that it needs less attention, nor should we have less energy and effort towards the population. I mean, I think it gives us a greater opportunity to be more intentional, to reach out to the communities when we have smaller numbers. The last is the breakdown around what the representation looks like across our schools. So we can see from elementary all the way through high school where the number, percentage of our students that are designated in our area, so Natchez Elementary School is 80% representation of our Native American-Alaska Native students, and then you can see it follows down from Hall to Hidden Valley, Shaw, Taylor, and then so forth and so on. So you can see, as we look at numbers, as we look at demographics, we have to be intentional to understand that we cover a wide range of community, and our students are dispersed all across, and so for us to focus energy on one particular part of the community would do a disservice to the other parts of our community and other students within that population. The next piece is the graduation rates within this cohort, and you can see, and Chairman Melendez referred to it earlier, around the increase in graduation rate. However, we still have work to do because we are below the proportionate line. We also know that numbers play a factor in that as well. We have increased in what's happening within our Native American communities, but we've had some honest conversation at our PAC committees about where are the students going, when they graduate? Are they graduating? Are they going to two-year, four-year colleges? And so we've, again, worked with Ben's department around getting that data and getting that back to PAC, because we want to be as transparent as possible, but we also want to have conversation about what are they seeing, what are we seeing, and making sure that we're having intentional and successful collaborations with our tribal partners. The next is the piece of data around the self-identified, Title VI eligible students, and you can see the difference around ELA, math, and our scores for graduation rates. And we've got some opportunity here, again, to be intentional. We know where our students are, and we know that we have to work and look at how we can provide resources. We have to be aware of the demographic changes and the distance that some of our students have to travel, and be honest about equitable resources and opportunities for successful outcomes for our students. So when we talk about things being available to all students to have equal access and opportunity for things, we have to honestly say, is that a true statement? And be intentional about addressing what's missing and where are the gaps so that our students can be successful. Okay, Chelsea?
So we just want to end with, you know, opportunities, and that opportunities to meet the unique academic needs of our American Indian-Alaska Native students within our district. And so one is sustaining and expanding relationships or partnerships with our tribal state and local and federal entities. Another is providing professional learning for our district admin-certified and classified personnel, also our central office admin. And then lastly, developing strong support systems within and out of the district to better serve our students. And so that can be cross-department collaboration, working with our local universities, colleges, and career vocational schools, attending our Hungary Valley vertical meetings, and so that's the Math Night registration, and then also working closely with Nevada Department of Education. So we would like to thank you for listening.
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Feimster.
Thank you, Madam President. Tiffany, do you know how many Native American students are in the IB program currently?
No, not right off the top of my head, but I'm sure I can get it from Ben and his department. No, I don't think Ben knows right off the top of his head either.
Oh, okay.
But I would say I think I can get it from him.
Okay, well, let me ask, do we know if we have any graduating this year?
I don't have that information right here, but we definitely can find out for you and get it back to you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, Trustee Frankel.
Thank you. Madam President, yes, and thank you for the presentation. I had a similar type of question. I was interested in knowing a little bit more data, maybe when you provide that data regarding IB, we can also hear about their participation in some of the other opportunities that our high school students have. I'm kind of focusing on high school students at the moment. So for example, in schools like TMCC High School, AACT, their participation in CTE programs and signature academies, as well as their participation and performance on AP exams. And so I'm kind of interested in seeing some of that data as well.
And that was one of the discussions that we had at our recent PAC meeting, because we had a parent bring about a concern about what was the racial breakdown of our Native American students within extracurricular activities. And what we also know is that we have to look at demographics, right? And we have to look at our students. When you look at programs like Upward Bound and the Dean's Future Scholars Program, we partner with the university, transportation is provided, not meaning that transportation is the cause in all cases, but we definitely want to talk about, are we creating not only the language around saying there's opportunities, but are we creating a welcoming environment that says that we're going to build around the needs of students? So it's a two-way partnership that needs to happen, students, families, and the community, and we as a district, and what our responsibility is for that too.
Other questions? I know we were just at the OSS presentations yesterday, talking about over identification in special education, and I wonder if that's an issue in the Native American population as well?
That's a good question.
Well, I know that when we look at some of our schools like Natchez, we do have a large number of students identified within the special education category, and I think that that's a deeper conversation to have around what the identification is, the wraparound supports, how are we meeting the needs of the families, and are we really truly partnering with the tribal communities to talk about resources and access and successful outcomes?
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, well, I know we appreciate how much you all do to support opportunities and equity for all of our students, and I know this is a, it's a small population, as you said, but it's a really important population. It's important to our region, and it's important to our culture and our heritage, so thank you for all that you're doing. And I really have to say, it's impressive that the district has supported the Paiute language program for so long. What is it now?
About seven years.
Seven years. That's very impressive, and so we thank you for all that you're doing, and I know the students and their families thank you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ben, I think you're going to have a few requests coming your way. Just saying. Okay. Okay, 3.02, consideration of approval to submit a request to the Nevada Department of Education for GIRLAC schools to operate on an alternative schedule with a four-day week, beginning with the 2018-2019 school year. Dr. Green is here, and Laura's here, and Michael Doring's here, and Ben Hayes is here. We have a full range of people who can answer important questions for us, so thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Green.
Good evening. President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board, Byron Green, Chief Student Services Officer for the record. We were in front of the board two weeks ago, I believe, with Stacy Black, our pseudo Dean teacher out at GIRLAC, and we presented a proposal for a four-day school week at GIRLAC. After that presentation, the trustees asked if our Accountability Office could go and survey the families in the community, just to make sure that everything, you know, was above board, and we're here to report on those results. And we have Laura Davidson, who is, I believe, the Director in Accountability, who's going to share those results with you today.
Hi, for the record, Laura Davidson, Director of Research for the Office of Accountability. So just to provide a little bit of background about the previous survey that was administered in February, we have some information about that. That was a paper survey administered in person by staff to GIRLAC families, and staff also received a paper-based survey. As you can see, the results from the previous administration, eight out of eight staff voted to change to the four-day school week, and eight out of 11 families voted for the four-day school week. So didn't have perfect consensus, but they did have 100% response rate among families, but then there were some concerns about the survey. So that's where Office of Accountability came in with a new survey, which we administered last week. So just a little context on that, so we used an online and a phone survey for this administration. So we did have email addresses for all families listed in GIRLAC. You also know, we did not administer a survey to staff because eight out of eight staff in February decided that they did want to do the four-day week, so we didn't feel the need to administer another survey to them since they had reached perfect consensus. For the families, we wrote an online survey and translated it into Spanish, because we do have some Spanish-speaking families in GIRLAC. And then we also created sort of a backup phone survey in English and Spanish in case we weren't able to reach families by email. So this process started on May 1st. On Tuesday, we sent out a pre-notification phone call to all families in GIRLAC notifying them that the survey was going to be arriving in their email inbox and to look for that. And then just a few hours later, that email arrived with a link to the online survey in English and Spanish. From there, we, on Thursday, sent our second reminder, and that was to the secondary email address we had on files for families, only to the families that had not yet responded to the survey. And then we also sent the survey again to their primary email address. And then if we had not heard from families as of Friday afternoon, then we started doing the phone calls to the three families who had not yet responded to the email survey. And then we continued those phone surveys on Monday. We were able to reach two more families, and so as of today, we have not heard from just one of the families in GIRLAC so far about their vote. But we do have about a 92% response rate on this survey. This is the online survey wording, in case any of you are interested. We did really emphasize in both the online survey, the pre-notification phone call, and the interview that the results would be confidential, and that it was the Office of Accountability running the survey. So we thought that was kind of an important distinction to make for this round of the survey. Here is the phone script that we used. Okay, so that brings us to the results as of today. So we have 12 votes that we received from 11 families. So note that there are 12 families out there. We received 12 votes, but from 11 families, so we're still missing one family. The reason that we have that kind of extra vote in there is because when we moved to the secondary email for families that we had not heard from, one family voted one way on the secondary email, and that family then either went back to their original survey or had partially completed their first survey. or had partially completed their first survey with a different response. So that family had a split vote, and both of them were recorded. And again, we can see that we have a perfect 50-50 split on what to do in Gerlach among families out there. So we have not reached consensus yet on how families feel about the four-day versus the five-day schedule. And one really important thing that I want to note here is, we're not necessarily surveying the same families now that we did in February. So we've had movement among families. We've had new families in, some families out, and that's consistent every year. I was looking at data from last year, transancy rates in Gerlach, and we had about a 50% transancy rate. So transancy is fairly high in the Gerlach community, so anytime you do this survey, you're going to end up with a different population. So it's a little bit apples to oranges on this survey. And that is, and one other point on this, in the February survey, there's a slightly different administration process with who's sort of coded as a family, so we use the household ID. So you might have families who, one child lives with one side of the family, the other child lives with another side of the family, and our system, that could be counted as two household IDs, and they'd get two votes. So again, sampling process is a little bit different for our survey versus February, but moral of the story is we're at a 50-50 split right now.
And that's your presentation?[685.62][685.62](Laughter).
That is our presentation.[687.62][687.62](Laughter).
So great presentation.
Wow.
Well, that leaves us with a difficult decision. Board members, any questions for our distinguished panel? We did receive some emails on this issue. We received several issues, emails in support. Yes, Trustee Frankel.
Can we ask that those emails be made part of the record?
Certainly.
Since public comment must, may be challenging for the folks from Gerlach, so that was, in essence, some important public comment that I think should be included in our record.
Yep, okay. And those were all sent to all the board members, so you should be able to get those, JJ, okay? Any other questions or comments? So the last survey was 100% staff voted for, plus a split in the families. And so that number was totaled last time. And now this time, we have just the families, but if you totaled it with the staff, you do have a different result. But I'm not sure that solves our dilemma. Yes, Trustee Frankel.
And I think it is a dilemma, and I was actually looking at it fairly similarly. Since we added the eight to the six, we would have ended up with 14 in favor, and last time, I believe it was 15 in favor. So the numbers overall are very close, which is what I anticipated might happen, but not even knowing and thinking about all the transancy and the change in at least three families voting, and how the votes were counted. I think, setting the votes aside for a moment, I'm thinking sort of that bigger picture about this request and about this suggestion and its importance, especially when we have consensus among the staff and some of the information we received via email, and some of the discussion that was presented to us at the previous board meeting, about the uniqueness of that environment, the challenges for our staff, which therefore immediately and directly affect those of our students, which we did receive a couple of emails really presenting the disruption that one staff person's absence has on the instruction of our students. So I think about the needs of our students, not just in terms of how their families voted, but also in terms of the impact of the disruption that can occur understandably and naturally because of the requirements of our staff as human beings who have needs and needs to come to Reno. So I see that as, for me, leading me to want to support the request for a four-day week. I also was struck by particularly the last email we received from a parent regarding the impact on their special needs child, of their services and their inability to access services because of their inability to leave the area easily during the school week without missing school. And so they're not getting some of the treatment and therapies that they need, which matters to me. And in a small school like that, I mean, every student matters, and that really struck me, and I know that's not the only special needs child at that school. So that was particularly important, hearing the challenges to that family and the sacrifices that seemed to be happening in that family because of the distance that they have from the metropolitan area. So that's my perception, and I see the split in the families. I also know, I'm not sure the numbers exactly, in terms of what you said, in terms of there may be a family that voted twice, and so that's, but that's less important to me than sort of thinking about the bigger picture and the overarching needs. I'm thinking about it also from the human resources standpoint, and the possibility of recruiting and attracting more staff, as was presented to us at the last meeting, and the opportunities for being able to attract and incentivize other staff to teach in Gerlach if we had a four-day school week, which they might not otherwise do, and some have expressed a willingness to do that. So for all those reasons, I am supportive of the idea, and I'm actually willing to make that motion unless we want to have further discussion first.
Yeah, let's see if there's an additional discussion. Yeah, I also appreciated those comments, Trustee Frankel, and I was very moved by the difficulty of any staff member who needs to, for whatever reason, come to the Reno area for an appointment, and there is no substitute that can take their place. And so we have kids unable to get the education that they come to the school for because of those situations. And again, I echo your comments, Trustee Frankel, that we really need to think about what's best for the students and how we can most efficiently and effectively deliver that commitment to them. Other questions? Yes, Trustee, Dr. Taylor.
More, thank you, Madam President. More of a comment, and I think I will concur with Trustee Frankel, in that if we consider the eight votes from the staff end, along with those from the family end, then there's more in favor, significantly more in favor of going to a four-day work week. And I too was particularly moved by the special needs family and their need to come to Reno to get services and so on. So from my standpoint, I hate the family vote going tie, you know, but for me, the tiebreaker are the eight votes for the, that the staff, that the staff sent in previously for going to a four-day week. I'm going to support that when this time's the vote.
And a question. Is it just extraordinarily disruptive to do this as a pilot for two years, for example, and see how families respond to it?
No.
Do you want me to take that, Superintendent Davis?
Sure.
All right. No, I think that's actually very reasonable to be able to see. I would recommend at least do it more than one year, just to see how that goes, especially with the change. I think we're also very appreciative of the board to change that week, you know, for the Burning Man, those. So we know that when we make a decision, sometimes we need to adjust upon that. So I think Student Services would be very supportive of a two-year trial to see how it goes, and then maybe come back to the table and see what's working or not.
And I think it might be more palatable to those families that are opposed, let's try this out, let's see how it works, and give people a chance to experience it and see what happens. Trustee, Dr. Feimster, I know you were one that were, you were concerned last time, just wanted to make sure if you had any questions or anything else you wanted.
No, I was never concerned about the, I would be the first one that wanted to go for a four-day week. It was just some concerns that were brought, they were addressed, and I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I just think it's, whenever we have a chance to double-check for the people, I think we should do it.
Okay. Okay, well, Trustee Raymond, do you have any questions? Everybody satisfied? Okay, you prepared to make a motion, Trustee Frankel?
I am. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the request for an alternative schedule for Gerlach schools to have a four-day school week for the next two school years to be revisited at that time, and with school in session over fall break, to allow for school to be dismissed during the week of the annual Burning Man Festival, beginning in the 2018-2019 school year, and directs the Superintendent to submit the request to the Nevada Department of Education.
I second.
Second.
If I may, if you're open to a friendly amendment, that after two years, we get input back from the families and staff?
Yes.
And that that become a part of the motion so that that step is...
Families and staff, yes. I'm happy to amend the motion that way.
Okay, and let me just ask, JJ, do we have any public comment on this?
No.
No? Okay, all right. And as we said, we will incorporate the emails we received as a part of public comment. All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you, trustees.
Thank you guys very much.
And thanks for, you know, being cowards and not making a recommendation, I'll tell you. It's all right. We appreciate that. Okay, 3.03, Opening and Possible Action to Award a Bid Which Meets or Exceeds a Posted Minimum Lease of $1,900 per Month and Other Conditions Listed in Board Resolution 18-001, Postpone the Award of Bid or Reject the Bid and Withdraw the Site for Lease of Cellular Communication Site at Reno High School. Mike Boster, our senior planner is here.
Good evening, my name is Mike Boster with Capital Projects. This is the second of two required public meetings to lease district property for the purchase, for the purpose of installing a new cell tower at Reno High School. On April 10th, the Board approved a resolution of intent to lease property, which is included as Attachment A of your staff report. And as required by statute, this resolution was posted twice in the Reno Gazette Journal and also in public offices in Reno and Sparks. So we hit the Spark City Hall, Reno City Hall, and the district main office at Admin. The NRS requires that the district open bids for property to be leased no less than three weeks from the first required meeting, so we're there. We have one, we've received one sealed bid from Spectrum Services on behalf of Verizon Wireless. NRS 373.270 requires that sealed bids must be opened, examined, and declared by the Board in public session. So here is the sealed bid. JJ, may I hand that to you to hand it to President Holland?
Just ignore the...
Okay, and while that's getting over to you, President Holland, the Board has the right to accept the bid that deems to be in the best interest of the school district, or it can reject any and all bids and withdraw the property from consideration. Also, once you open the bid, the Board President must call for any oral bids that have to exceed that, whatever you're reading there, by 5% than the highest written proposal. And if the Board does approve the cell tower, our next steps would be to proceed to lease document, which would be reviewed by our general counsel and our contract review staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boster.
Thank you.
So we have received a bid from Spectrum Services, and in short, I will just read this bid. Do I have to read the whole thing, just the pertinent parts?
I think just the pertinent parts.
Okay. Pertinent parts, so Verizon would like to lease approximately 500 square feet along the parking lot fence near the southwest end of the football stadium bleachers, together with the replacement of an existing stadium light pole with an antenna array to be located above the top, which was referenced in the materials. Lessy to pay $2,500 for an initial option period of 12 months, initial term of five years, plus four automatic renewal options, for a total of 25 years. Verizon also agrees to the following as outlined in Resolution 18-001 dated April 10th. So again, lessy is paying $2,500 for an option period of 12 months, and then a lease rate of $1,900 per month with annual increases of 3%. Lessy to transfer ownership of the tower to Washington County School District after completion of construction, subject to Washington County School District inspection and acceptance of the tower, and lessy to pay an option payment of $2,500 upon execution of the lease. So I think that those 2,500s are the same. And then lessy to pay a one-time payment of $1,750 to the Washington County School District for reimbursement of NRS-required lease assessment. And then there's additional language about maintenance access, non-school hours, providing construction drawings, et cetera. So we have received one legitimate written bid sealed, and now I need to ask if there is anyone interested in making an oral bid. Is there anyone interested in making an oral bid? Okay. So the Board can accept the bid, and if there's anything, of course, we didn't get any oral bids, they would have to be 5% higher than any written bid. If we want to accept a bid, we must accept the highest bid offered, which is this one, so it sounds like our options are, we can either accept or reject this one bid that we have received.
And Madam President, if I may...
Are you clear about what this, what the money is, counsel?
I am, I am. And just to make the Board more comfortable, I've been reading Board Resolution 18-001 along with the bid, and it seems consistent. Is that correct, Mike? Yes, sir, I believe it is as well. I did want to mention also that Spectrum Services is in attendance tonight. They do have something called photo simulations, if you're interested in seeing what the tower would look like at Reno High School. Kind of an interesting note here is, when you leave here, there are two cell towers out at Reed here. We've got two towers in the football stadium here. One is a Verizon, one is an AT&amp;T. Both of those are about 10 to 15 years old of technology, and they're not the most attractive things on the stadium. So the photo simulations do show a nicer-looking tower that has what's called a radome on top. It's almost like a, it's a barrel almost, that covers up those big arms, which are the cell antennas. So Spectrum is in attendance today, if you want to see that.
I think that would be great to see that, yeah. Would they please come forward and share with us the simulation?
She might have to walk those around the, photos are a little hard to see.
Thank you for doing that. We appreciate the effort to show us what that would look like. Thank you. And can you introduce yourself for the record, please? On the microphone, thank you.
Julie Warden with Spectrum Services.
Okay. So, and Ms. Warden, is it?
Warden.
Warden. And so I just want to make sure we're understanding this clearly, so that the $2,500 is an option payment for the initial option period of 12 months?
Yes, that gives us a chance to get the permits and create the drawings and go get to construction.
Okay, and then $1,900 per month with annual increases of 3%, and it's a initial term of five years, plus four automatic renewal options for a total of 25 years.
Yes.
So anyone have questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Verizon has also offered to bring to the table $20,000 for a new scoreboard project.
Wow. We welcome that, thank you. That's a, that's a great offer. We appreciate that. Okay, is, are there any other questions? Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Again, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to, so it's $2,500 the first year, to give you time for licensing and so on, and then $1,900 in year two, and that would go up automatically 3% each year for the life of the agreement, which would be 25 years?
Yes.
Do I have that right?
With renewals, everything.
And that's when it could be renewed and, or what have you? Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to be clear, thank you.
Counsel has determined that the bid is consistent with the resolution? So unless there are any further questions, yes, Dr. Taylor?
I'd like to just make a motion, if you're prepared, if you want me to, if you're ready for one, Madam President?
Please do. Oh, and do we have any other public comment? I just want to see if there's any other public comment? No? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I move that the Board of Trustees accepts and awards a bid from, would it be Verizon or Spectrum?
From Verizon.
From Verizon. I move that the Board of Trustees accepts and awards a bid from Verizon for the lease of a cellular communication site at Reno High School for $2,500 for the first month, and, I mean, for $2,500 per month for the first year.
No.
No, $2,500 for the first year.
At signing.
Yes.
It's an option payment at signing, but it'll be $1,900 a month.
Yes.
It's not $2,500 a month for the first year.
Oh, so it's just a flat rate of...
It's a flat, yeah, just to get them in while they're doing...
I thought, I just clarified that, and I guess I didn't. Okay, so let me make sure I clarify before I voluntarily make a motion. $2,500 at signing.
Yes.
Take your licensing and so on. And it's $1,900 per month, which will go up 3% per year for 25 years. In addition to 25, $20,000 for a scoreboard.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Go for it.
Okay, good. All right, you can fire me if I don't get it right after this, okay?
No, no.
Okay. I move that the Board of Trustees accepts and awards a bid from Verizon for the lease of a cellular communication site at Reno High School for $1,900 per month and other conditions, including $2,500 at signing, and $20,000 for a scoreboard project at Reno High School, and other conditions included in Board Resolution 18-001, as approved by the Board on April 10th, 2018.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice President Raymond. Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wording, and thank your group for the generous contribution to the scoreboard. I know that will be very welcome.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 3.04, discussion possible action to provide preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 6140, Sexuality, Health, and Responsibility Education Share, formerly 6142.1, which revises language-related protocols for acquiring parent permission for student participation in the program and initiation of the 13-day public comment period. And by the way, Mr. Boster, thank you for your presentation, didn't mean to neglect you there. Okay.
You got excited by the $20,000.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Byersdorf, Kendra Fox, and Rochelle Pockter are here.
Hello, we're back, we're back again.
The SHARE team.
Yeah, absolutely, the SHARE team. President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, and members of the Board. So yes, we are back before you again, seeking approval to move forward on information that we brought to you at last week's policy meeting. To, to just remind you a little bit of what we discussed last week, we brought forward, suggested or proposed changes in the SHARE policy from our SHARE committee, and we also brought forward changes or clarification to language around how parents and guardians are notified of SHARE at their child's school. So that's what we are seeking to move forward to the, to the next phase in approving the policy.
Thank you. And again, we already have parents registering online, so, and I did hear you say that you would make arrangements if anyone was unable to provide that opting by computer, that other arrangements would be made for those families, so.
Yes, we've been clarifying with teachers and counselors and such that any of the parents that are confused may be making, marking no, we would go back verbally, make phone calls, send home paper permission slips again, and on top of that, having those parent preview nights to review what we will be teaching in the SHARE classes, so.
Great. And I think I recall you also said if anybody didn't mark either, they would, they would get a call, just to clarify.
Exactly.
Great. Okay, all right, and, and thank you for bringing this forward. Does anyone have a motion? Vice President Raymond? Thank you.
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 6140, Sexuality, Health, and Responsibility Education Share, formerly 6142.1, and initiates the 13-day public comment period.
Second.
All right, motion by Vice President Raymond, second by Trustee Kelly, and I didn't ask for public comment. JJ, is there any public comment? No public comment, okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, one down, sort of. Okay, and then 3.05 is discussion possible action to provide preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 6154, Homework, which removes language-making homework mandatory and changes it to a site-based school decision and initiation of the 13-day public comment period. And Ms. Byersdorf, Ms. Fox?
Again, thank you very much, President Simon Holland, Deputy, or excuse me, Superintendent Davis, and members of the Board. Again, Deborah Byersdorf, Chief Academic Officer. So Kendra Fox, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and I came before you last week to make proposed changes to policy around homework. And again, our proposal is to make homework a site-based decision in collaboration with the site administrator, the principal, and teachers to better meet the needs of their particular school site, their course of study, considerations, suggestions from parents, et cetera.
Okay, want to add anything, Ms. Fox?
I think she said it.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay, no cheering sections or, okay. And again, we do want to state for the public record, that doesn't mean we're eliminating homework. It means that schools will have the opportunity to make those decisions based on what's best for their school population and their community. Okay, no public comment. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Oh, they're fighting over this one.
They don't.
Uh-oh, I want to see an arm wrestle. No, I think, Dr. Feimster, go ahead.
Okay. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval of proposed revision to Board Policy 6154, the homework policy, and initiatives for the 13-day public comment period.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Feimster and a second by Trustee Kelly. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay. We will move on to item 3.06, discussion possible action to provide preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 5400, Student Attendance, which revises the minimum attendance requirement, removes specific language related to absence types, and adds language related to student interventions and the Student Attendance Advisory Committee and initiation of the 13-day public comment period. And Dr. Lapenta is here, as well as Rochelle Marillo.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Madam Superintendent. My name is Bryn Lapenta, and with me is Rochelle Marillo, and this policy was presented last week, and there are no changes.
Well, that's quick and clean. Okay. Any, any comments, any questions? Is there any public comment? No public comment? Do I have a motion? Vice President Raymond?
I'll make it. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval of the proposed revision of Board Policy 5400, Student Attendance, and initiates the 13-day public comment period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Frankel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You didn't even get to, you know, make a presentation or anything driving here to read tonight, but you had a good dinner. I hope you got some of those wonderful Indian tacos. Okay. Item 3.07, discussion possible action to provide preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 1160, Communications, Community Engagement, and Public Relations, which revises language related to family engagement and adds language related to the use of the district's logo and initiation of the 13-day public comment period. Irene Payne is here. Welcome, Ms. Payne.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Oh, jolly good. Good evening.
Jolly good. I have never heard you say that, Ms. Payne, and it was delightful. Jolly good.
For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer.
That is on the record, isn't it?
What the jolly good is.
I hope it's on the tape.
Yes, wonderful.
So I'm here to talk about the policy 1160, which is communications, community relations, and public engagement. I presented this to you a couple of weeks ago. There were no changes at that time. Just to very quickly recap, the policy is really being amended just to include some clarifying language around the Council on Family Engagement. It reports to the Family School Partnership Department, it's not a committee of the Board, so we're clarifying that. And then the other piece is also talking about the, the school district's logo use and graphic standards, which we have developed and are online, and that really is just to maintain the integrity of the brand and the brand equity, so I open it up for questions.
Does anyone have questions? Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, would anyone like to make a motion? Trustee Kelly, it's all yours.
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval of the proposed revision of Board Policy 1160, Communications, Community Engagement, and Public Relations, and initiates the 13-day public comment period.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dr. Taylor. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Irene.
Lovely.
Jolly good.
Jolly good.
Made my night.
I know.
That and tacos.
Yeah, you're easy. 3.08, discussion possible action to provide preliminary approval of Board Policy 9200, Discrimination and Harassment Prohibited, formerly Board Policy 9201, Bullying, Harassment, and Discrimination Prohibited, which adds language related to staff training and moves language related to bullying to the Safe and Respectful Learning Environment Policy and initiates the 13-day public comment period. Our illustrious Chief General Counsel, Neil Lombardo, is here, as well as our famous, infamous Chief of Staff, David Lasik.
Jolly good. It doesn't, no. Uh-uh. No, I know. So we're here on Board Policy 9200. David's going to go through the changes that you requested last time. We discussed this with you with Ms. Session two weeks ago. Basically, bullying, which is in the next policy, has been removed from harassment and discrimination, which makes sense under the law, and so now bullying is going to go into the Students section because it's, only students can be bullied. And so it's just to clarify that. So this, in our mind, this is a necessary cleanup, and maybe David can go through the changes that you guys requested last time, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Mr. Lasik.
Good evening, David Lasik, Chief of Staff, for the record. So at the Board Policy Committee meeting, there were two changes requested, and so that was on page four, and we added a section around confidentiality. And then also at the very end, under desired outcomes, we added a statement about this policy promoting a culture of respect. Since the Board Policy Committee meeting, and at the good suggestion of Trustee Frankel, we added, under Section 1B at the beginning, the, under the list of prohibited items, citizenship, status, and native language to the items that are not okay to be discriminated against. So good suggestions, and those are incorporated under Attachment D in Board Docs, and those were emailed also last night, and hopefully everybody was provided a copy, so just wanted to point those out.
And they're available here as well.
Yep, for the record.
Great. And thank you, Trustee Frankel, for those suggestions. I think it's very much in keeping with this Board's commitments and, and our public stance on those items, so thank you for that. And thank you, staff, for making those changes. Do we have any questions? Discussion? Bless you. Do you have any public comment, JJ? No, okay. All right, thank you, go ahead, Trustee Frankel.
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 9200, Discrimination and Harassment Prohibited, formerly Board Policy 9201, Bullying, Harassment, and Discrimination Prohibited, and initiates the 13-day public comment period.
Thank you, Trustee Frankel. Is there a second?
I second.
Trustee Dr. Taylor is second?
And just wanted to say thank you to staff and, and the conversations, and for making those changes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, and then you two are up again on item 3.09, discussion possible action to provide preliminary approval to revisions of Board Policy 5700, Safe and Respectful Learning Environment, formerly Board Policy 9205, which focuses language in the policy to student bullying and related issues addressed in Senate Bill 225 of the 2017 Nevada Legislative Session, and initiates the 13-day public comment period.
And so, as I just said, this is, as I just said, this is basically cleaning up. Originally, this policy was in 9205. It didn't make sense, really, because that's a board, that's board policy numbering, so this is a, now being moved to 5700, which deals with students, and we're basically codifying what was found in SB 225, and it has to do with things such as training, and who can be bullied, and those type of things. And then David will talk, go through the changes.
Okay, and thank you to President Simon Holland for pointing out that we neglected to put in mandatory reporting requirements for staff and volunteers, so that has been added to the policy on Pages 3 and Pages 4. Page 3 about it's mandatory for staff and volunteers to report known incidences of bullying, and Page 4 just encouraging students and parents to report to the school or school police if they are, if a student has been subject to bullying. Other than that, those are the changes that were made since the policy committing, committee meeting last Tuesday. Again, it's Attachment D in Board Docs, you should have been provided a copy of that, and those were sent out last night.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Chief of Staff, on Page 1 at the bottom, Policy 1, subsection C, now, part of the reason we're making the changes is because the idea is that if it were adult on adult, it would be harassment and not bullying?
Yes.
Right? And so, with that being said, do we need where neither are district employees at the very end there? Because it doesn't matter if they're district employees.
Yeah, I guess it's not needed.
Because it doesn't matter if, because if they are district, this implies that if they are district employees, this would apply.
I think the distinction is that the first phrase in commas is a staff member on another staff member, or an adult on another adult where neither are district employees. In other words, they're employees in the first clause, and the second clause, they're not. They're just adults that are not.
Yeah, I think, I agree. This is pointing out that staff-on-staff bullying is no longer allowed for or in law, so this whole policy talks about safe and respectful learning, but for students. So we're just clarifying that this employee-to-employee bullying does not apply to this policy.
But I think Trustee Taylor's question is, isn't it irrelevant to say where neither are district employees? But that's only, that's only describing an adult on another adult that's not a district employee in the first place. It's staff on staff.
But I kind of see what she's saying, she's saying a staff member on a staff member, so if you don't.
It's redundant.
It's redundant.
Or an adult on another adult if they're not district employees.
Right, because it doesn't matter.
Right.
Because in my mind, in reading this, it implies that, it says where neither are district employees, it implies that if they are district employees, then this would be different.
Right.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's certainly nothing to lay on the sword for, but just as we were cleaning it up.
You could just leave it as an adult on another adult.
That would be my recommendation, if it applies.
Staff or not.
I think you should put a period after that second adult and cross that off, because it does seem to infer that if there was an employee involved, it could be bullying.
Right, and that, that was my concern. So I would just, my suggestion would be just to put a period after adult.
Right.
On adult.
Yeah.
On another adult, period, and then strike that last phrase.
I agree.
I guess, I think what it's trying to say for, is two adults who are not district employees, bullying doesn't apply, and we are not responsible. So if two parents are at a school, and there's alleged bullying that occurs between the two parents, those are both adults, they're not district employees, so therefore, you know, this doesn't apply.
Mm-hmm. But if they are district employees, this doesn't apply.
Then it's a staff member on another staff.
It's staff on another staff member.
Oh, so you're saying it's cer-
There's a distinction between staff and non-staff.
Mm-hmm. But if, regardless of whether the, whether it's staff that are employees or not, or it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, I get what you're saying. It's just additional clarification.
Okay, that's, it's okay, again.
It's redundant.
It is certainly nothing to lay on the sword over.
But it, it has created some confusion, so let's put the period after the second use of the word adult. Then it implies that staff members aren't adults. Sorry, I'm just.
I'm trying, I'm trying to see if you can come up with a word.
I think it's assumed that staff members are adults.
Help out, Verizon, this is when you jump in, help out, come on, help out.
But I mean, I understand the reason for the language, and so for the reasons we talked about, so I'm wondering, just an adult on an adult.
Yeah, that was my-
I, I think we could add something along the lines of a non-employee adult on a, I mean, I, it's non-employee, I mean, it's basically what that, that pair, that line is trying, that last phrase is trying to get at.
Well, what they're saying is whether it's a staff member on a staff member, or any other adult on any other adult, it doesn't apply.
Well, then maybe the phrase could read, act of bullying does not apply to a student enrolled in kindergarten, or any adult, whether a staff member or not.
Yeah. Yeah.
Something along those lines.
Mm-hmm.
What was that?
Say that again.
JJ? No. No, I, that, the first part of this stays, the-
Read the whole thing.
Okay. The act of bullying does not apply to a student enrolled in pre-kindergarten, or any adult, be it a staff member or non-staff member.
On any other adult.
On any other adult. Something along those lines.
I will just tell you that what we're trying to get at here is, if this helps, is we've had complaints from parents complaining about other parents.
Right.
Parents complaining about teachers.
That's right.
Teachers complaining about parents. Teachers want to assert bullying against parents. So, we had determined before the law came out that we weren't going to enforce that that way. It just didn't make sense. Luckily, the legislature agreed and changed the law to match what we're saying here. So, that's what we're trying to get at.
And I think Trustee Frankel's language does achieve that. Does anyone else have any concerns about that suggested language? David, I think you're tracking this. Yeah.
Yep. So, I'll read it back, the whole thing. The act of bullying does not apply to a student enrolled in pre-kindergarten, or any adult, be it a staff member or non-staff member.
On any other adult.
On any other adult.
Okay. So, any adult on any other adult, be, what'd you say about it not being a staff member?
Oh, maybe that's the way I could write it. An any adult on any adult, be they staff members or not.
Or not, yes.
That's probably not, English teachers will be groaning, because they don't want to end a sentence with "not." But-
Regardless of whether they are staff members.
Woo! We are really-
We're wordsmithing, yeah.
Yeah. I think we, yeah.
We gotta go back to how it was.
Look at your start.
Have you seen my statement?
I think we, I think, I think we're okay. I didn't get a jolly good.
Jolly good. Jolly good.
Okay. I think we have it. Would you like to read it again, David, just so JJ has it?
I'll attempt to. The act of bullying does not apply to a student enrolled in pre-kindergarten, or any other adult, regardless if the adult is a staff member or non-staff member.
Don't we need to say any adult on any other adult?
Regardless whether the adults, since it's plural, are-
Are employees of the district.
Yep. Okay. I think we're done with that one. I'm scared to read it again.
Will wordsmith it.
Yeah, you'll get it.
I move what we just said.
Okay. Would you like me to restate that motion?
Nope.
Sure. So, we need a second first.
Well, actually, we don't think anybody says anything.
We don't.
She did. Oh, she did. Okay.
Trustee Dr. Taylor.
She made a motion? I'm, I'll second.
I did.
Okay. Now, we're going to have a reading.
So, the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 5700, Safe and Respectful Learning Environment, with additional clarification in language to Section 1C, and initiates the 13-day public comment period.
Wonderfully, wonderfully good. Thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly what I said.
It is. I heard it.
Yeah.
I heard it. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Is there any public comment?
Just for the record, just, okay, just for the record, I think we should make it clear that this isn't a material change, because it's basically just a rewrite of the sentence. We're not changing the meaning of the sentence. And so, at this point in time, I think it's appropriate to keep this moving forward. I know we always have some confusion on that. So, I just want to put that on the record.
Okay, great. Okay. And thank you for making those suggested changes about the immediacy of the need for reporting. Appreciate that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Please, no.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's a very serious issue, and we're not, we don't want to imply that we're taking it lightly. It's a, it's a-
I mean, that's why we want to get it right.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay. It's what happens to us when we have tacos for dinner. Okay. And this is a biggie. This is a very exciting next item. 3.10, Presentation Possible Action to Approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price 2, GMP 2, from Q&amp;D Construction LLC. Q&amp;D as the construction manager at risk, C-MAR, for the vertical construction of the building at the South Meadow site, Nick Polakides Elementary School, in the amount of $24,310,217, with an owner's contingency of $848,000, for a total of $25,158,217, and approval of the owner, C-MAR Construction Agreement. And Adam Cersei is here, Chief Capital Projects and Facilities Management Officer, and Monica Scherhoudin, Assistant Purchasing Supervisor. Welcome. And I know we have representatives from Q&amp;D here as well. So, thank you for joining us, Adam and Monica. Please go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Adam Cersei. This is the presentation to award potentially GMP 2 for essentially the construction of the Nick Polakides Elementary School building. Wanted to just kind of outline the scope of tonight's presentation. Going to kind of go through the scope of work. Monica's going to walk you through, really, the advertise and the GMP C-MAR process. I'm going to talk a little bit about why that brought so much benefit to this particular project, and go ahead and finish up with the bottom line. So, just to rewind a couple of months, you guys probably recall, in February, you approved GMP 1, Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract Number 1, for essentially the site improvements associated with this school. Pleased to report, we're right on schedule. Really haven't hit any unforeseen issues. We're probably 60% complete on that contract right now, perhaps ready to pour foundations as soon as the end of this month. GMP 2 is really what we're here to talk about tonight. Essentially consists of the vertical construction, the building itself. And like I said, they'll hopefully be ready to begin on that scope pending this evening's action before the end of the month. It's about a year's worth of construction, and we're right on schedule to have that building open in time to furnish it and get teachers prepared for the start of school, August 2019. So, this GMP 2, as I kind of mentioned, essentially consists of the construction of the building itself. Just to be clear, we broke the total construction contract into these two packages, really, to get the contractors out there working as soon as possible. This GMP 2, we will complete all of the construction contracting necessary for the project. We will be furnishing the building FF and E, as we refer to it, as furniture, fixtures, and equipment. The school district will be installing all of that. But GMP 2 will complete all of the construction contracts for this school. So, that was basically the scope. Monica's going to walk us through, really, how we went about developing this contract.
If I, if I may, just, Madam President?
Yes.
Please. Um, Adam, thank you. The furniture fixtures and the equipment, so is that a part of the GMP?
It's not.
No.
It's not actually. It's items that we will contract, the school district's staff will contract for and purchase directly. Our staff will install it, whether it be IT equipment, or literally just tables and desks. So, the building hardware itself, everything, playground equipment, landscaping, parking lots, all of that stuff is a part of either GMP 1 or GMP 2. And then, kind of the finishing touches inside the building will be contract, we'll be purchasing directly and installing ourselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. So, moving forward, we're going to talk about the advertisement and the prequalification process, as governed under the NRS 338, which is Public Works. The outreach by Q&amp;D to prequalify their proposers went out to 454 subcontractors originally were contacted. Then we had 360 prequalified respondents across 45 trades. The proposal was ultimately advertised on March 2. And we want to highlight that the C-MAR process brings highly qualified subcontractors to the project, which also provides value to the district directly.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The subcontractor proposal process, which is overseen by Q&amp;D, we showed that all scopes were publicly advertised and competitively awarded. The invitation to propose, which is basically the invitation to bid, for prequalified subcontractors, again, was sent out on March 2. We had 82 total bid RFIs, or requests for information received, 73 prebid RFIs received for plan and spec review, three addenda were issued based on the RFI response, 97 total proposals were received across all trades, and most trades received multiple proposals. Market competition improves quality and saves the district money as well. Under subcontractor selection, all the final proposals were opened on March 29. Of the 97 proposals received across 45 trades, they were all evaluated individually. They were evaluated by Q&amp;D to confirm completeness and accuracy. Descoping interviews were conducted with proposers between March 2 and March 6. And for those that might be not familiar with the descoping process, that is where we actually go through each individual bid, and we match what was bid to the scope of work, to make sure there's no holes or gaps between what the contractors were proposing and what Q&amp;D had actually asked for. The purchasing department and capital project staff was present throughout the entire process to ensure compliance with NRS and district policies, which led to successfully completing GMP 2 negotiations between Q&amp;D and the district. An 81% of the total GMP value is being awarded to local subcontractors. This gives us the max, the guaranteed maximum price overview, and just kind of the 30,000-foot level of what a GMP is, consists of the cost of construction for all trades, contractor contingency, owner contingency, and allowances. The C-MAR fee, which was fixed by the original contract, and was considered 20% of the original selection criteria, and the management of risk. Washoe County School District has made an investment in the project by using C-MAR to ensure a quality and timely product will also optimally manage risk.
So, okay, on that note, the, want to just touch on the C-MAR process itself. You know, this first bullet point talks to the document quality, the value created through the C-MAR process. I want to emphasize the fact that this is a brand-new building. It was designed during the last year in partnership with the contractor who's now going to help us construct it. So much value came out of that process, sitting side by side with the architect, and the engineers, and the owner, and the actual general contractor, who knows how to build these buildings, and is providing that input now, when we can make those changes on paper, before we're actually making, you know, changes in the field that tend to cost more. So, tremendous value, specifically in this application, derived from the C-MAR process. We were also very fortunate with the timing, the seasonal timing of this bid. It worked out well for us. I believe a lot of contractors are still eager and hungry to fill their workload for the remainder of 2018 and into 2019. I think we saw that in the interest that we saw. And then the participation in competition. You know, Monica rattled off a bunch of statistics. The bottom line is, it took effort to engage all those subcontractors, many of whom were from out of town, to create that competitive environment, motivate our contractors not only to participate, but to give us the most, the best pricing that they could, and ultimately, give us the best value for the project. This outreach and support, you know, not only was spearheaded by the school district and our partners, Q&amp;D, and other, our design team, but really was supported by the community. You know, this has been a long time in coming. We're really pleased about being here this evening. I know you mentioned Q&amp;D. I want to specifically give a shout out to Tobin Basta, Vice President with Q&amp;D Construction, was alongside us the whole way. And just want to thank him again for being here tonight. But that's, that's pretty much the whole story. This brings us kind of to the punchline. GMP 2, $24,310,217, as well as the owner contingency for $848,000, for a total of $25,158,217. That will complete the construction of this project. Want to also, not to jump the gun on your action here this evening, but also want to put in a plug for next Tuesday afternoon, May 15. I'm sure you're all invited, but as well as the public, we're hosting a ground, a celebration, a ceremony out on the job site to really celebrate this event. So, next Tuesday, May 15, 1:00 p.m. And that's the conclusion of our presentation.
All right. Thank you, Adam. This is a big, exciting day. I know we're very, very thrilled to have this process coming forward. And we're very grateful to staff and to Q&amp;D and all of the subs and the folks that are participating in this. Pretty impressive, the response to the proposals, especially when there is so much competition for those contractors right now. So, we're very excited, and thank you all for, for all of that. And I know I speak for the entire board, that we're very pleased to see the amount of local contractors that will be working on behalf of this project. We think that's always a good thing. And we know that they care about it, because their kids will be going to these schools. So, very important. Any questions from the board? Okay. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to say thank you for the-
Why don't you come up? Just, it's nice to have you on the record. Thank you. And give your name for the record.
My name's Tobin Basta. I'm with Q&amp;D Construction. Just wanted to thank all of you for the opportunity that we have to construct this new school for you. It's been a good process, I think, working with the school district and the design team, and coming up with what I think is the optimal design, optimal price, that we arrived at with a lot of competitive bidding. And I think this is a really good prototype going forward for the next generation of elementary schools for you. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Basta. And we certainly are grateful for your expertise. And we know that Q&amp;D is very busy these days. So, we're pleased that you're able to be our partners on this project. And we did have some questions that staff was very quick to answer. The $25,158,217 is within the 25.5 million that we had estimated for this project, that we had, that independent folks had estimated for this project, even when you include the site work bid that was, that's currently being completed. So, that's really good news, that it came in within the estimated price, and with local contractors, and with a great partnership. Any, any comments or questions? Okay. Who wants to make the motion, Trustee Kelly? He's awake now. He's been awake the whole night. He has.
But now, I'm really awake.
Really awake.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Guaranteed Maximum Price 2 from Q&amp;D Construction as a construction manager at risk for the vertical construction of the building at the South Meadow site, Nick Polakides Elementary School, in the amount of $24,310,217, with an owner's contingency of $848,000, for a total of $25,158,217, and approval of the owner, C-MAR Construction Agreement.
Second. All right. Motion by Trustee Kelly, second by Trustee Frankel. Is there any other discussion? Any public comment? No? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Very exciting. And we'll see you all next week. Yes. Great. Thank you. And staff, wonderful job. Really, truly wonderful job. I know this is a gigantic project of many projects that you all have, that you're juggling. So, thank you. And I want to welcome Mr. Ryan Gonda, who's in the audience. Nice to see you, Mr. Gonda.
All right.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay. Let's go on, then, to board reports. Let's start with Dr. Taylor.
All right. I can't help but talk about teacher appreciation week, and just thank the staff for just all the work that you did to put it together and make it happen, and all of that. I kind of volunteered this, for this thing a couple of years ago. And it's more like you do a whole lot more just to make this thing happen. So, I really appreciate it. And just for all of us to be, being involved, and taking donuts out. And I got some school visits in along the way, which was, it was a busy day, but it was, it was a great day just to, just to love on and really appreciate our teachers. Had, just had, had great visits. Let's see. I did donuts to Hug, Trainer, and Duncan. And my school visits were Duncan, Trainer, and Cannon. And so, I got a chance to spend some great time, and even got a little bit of swag along the way, which is always a nice little bonus. But it was great, taking pictures and talking to kids, and just seeing what was going on. I met a teacher who was a 34-year teacher in the district.
Wow. Wow.
And I got to just be with her in her classroom for a little bit. So, it was great. It was really good. So, thanks for all the work, for everybody for making this happen. And just again, another, another big, huge thank you to all of our educators out there.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor. Trustee Kelly?
Yeah, just to echo on teacher appreciation week. I mean, visiting a couple of schools this week. I visited Natches, and, which was really interesting and great school out there. Hunsburger, Double Diamond, Roy Gahn. And all the classrooms I went into, I mean, there, the teachers were receiving not just donuts, but flowers and little gift cards and stuff. So, it just shows that the, the community really, really values teachers and what they do. And of course, the students were just so happy to be given their teachers these, these different gifts. So, it's been, it's been a great week, and we still have a few more days left for Teacher Appreciation Week. But I think it should be Teacher Appreciation Year. But for the week, it's great.
Every day. Yeah. Good. Okay. Dr. Feimster?
Just want to talk about Spotlight on Success. It was absolutely wonderful. Great being at O'Brien. That was my first teaching position out at O'Brien. And the school looked so nice and clean. And I was so proud of that. And everyone was so happy to receive their awards. So, that one was just the best for me. And of course, last night, Katie and I hosted our meet and greet at North Valley's High School. And that was really, really, really nice. You know, it's- You know, it's great.
Intimate group.
Yeah. Very intimate, but I got to tell you, the people know they're, they're being heard. And we heard some information and hopefully we're able to do something about it. If not, at least they know they were heard. And then this morning I got, you know, I told a story about last year, how I wanted to dig into those donuts so badly. And the guy went inside and just brought me a whole box out. So, that was cool. I was like, wow. And I still have half of them left, so I just want you guys to know. I didn't eat them all.
Sure.
But I'm, I'm, I'm gonna polish them off in about a day or two, so. Other than that, it was a great week and thanks to everyone who helped. You know, Samantha, thank you so much for helping us put these meet and greets together because it's really important for us. And Communication Department, you guys are wonderful getting the word out. And David, I want to thank you for being there to answer those questions that we can't answer and Kristen also, so thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I see one of our attendees from last night is here, Carlin. Thanks for coming to the meeting today. Nice to see you.
All right.
Who is a teacher in the district and teaches CLS and we very much appreciate that. So, thanks for being here tonight.
Awesome.
Trustee Frankel?
Well, there's a lot. First, I want to just do a shout-out to Student Voice, to staff and the Department of Accountability and how amazing that event was. It is so powerful and incredible to hear those students. The talent, the presentation skills, the experiences, their vision. And it's just an honor to be there and, and to listen to those students. Followed up that event, President Holland and I remained for the Safety Forum the same day, which was another great opportunity to hear from the community. And I want to thank the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission and its Chairman Lisa Ruggerio. But I also want to shout-out to Chief Trevino, who I sat in one of the little breakout groups with him and just does an amazing job answering some tough questions from parents regarding safety and infrastructure. And it's just a great event every year and I'm glad that we put that on and get some really good ideas and opportunity to answer questions. Attended the Salute to Signatures event also with President Holland. We've been spending a little bit of time together.
We have.
And to celebrate our CTE and Signature Academies, so many award winners, national award winners, state award winners among our students in so many different fields and disciplines. And of course, we get to sample their culinary delights from all the different high schools. I think I, I was handed so much food. I didn't need to eat dinner when I got home. But shout-out to Dana Ryan and all the teachers and staff and that make that program run. Just the passion of those students is really impressive and the future is bright whenever I see those students be recognized and present to us. I also had a chance to, and I always enjoy delivering the donuts and resisting the temptation to eat them, but I went and delivered donuts to Moss Mendive and Reed. And I actually just did school visits to Mendive and Reed, so I feel like I've spent a lot of time. In fact, started the day here and have ended the day here back at Reed again. And along the way during the day, also had two more school visits. I visited Lincoln Park and spent a little bit of time in the fourth grade AVID class, which is a pilot class, which is, for folks who don't know what AVID is, which I actually didn't know the acronym fully, but now I do, advancement via individual determination, which I think is a great title because what I was seeing was these students really taking charge of their learning and working together. Just the organizational skills and the structure and the conceptual thinking and problem-solving that they're learning through that curriculum and that program is tremendous. I also went to Deirdrickson Elementary School, which has a huge emphasis on social-emotional learning, real passion for that. And I saw it, again, observed in a second-grade classroom where they were discussing and debating their perspectives about the story that they were reading and just very respectfully disagreeing with one another and practicing those skills. I'm always impressed to see that at such young ages and I love that program. So, it's been a busy couple of weeks, but that's what I've been up to.
All right. Thanks, Kristy Frankel. Vice President Raymond?
Well, I've been able to do some school visits. Went to Rise with President Holland and visited Bernice Matthews and Jessie Beck. Both great visits with their principals. Had an opportunity to go to Echo Loader for a teacher presentation. Tanya Coleman. She did a presentation for her Teachers Leading Change and it was about trauma-informed teaching through art. It was really impressive how much time she spent on the program, but also how much it was impacting her students that are highly impacted, so. Had the opportunity to hand out some awards to teachers who have done twenty-eight or more parent-teacher home visits this year. And there were two teachers at the award ceremony that had done forty or more home visits, which is amazing. Also had the absolute honor and privilege to introduce Scarlett Lewis, who did the presentation Choose Love, a parent of a Sandy Hook Elementary School first grader who was killed and got to then, of course, stay for her presentation, which was amazing. I know she then went on to do more with the principals. This was more for families. And I just will take a moment to publicly thank our mayor, Hillary Shivi. Mayor of Reno was there. Assemblywoman Jill Toles was there. And one of the members of the Safety Task Force for the Governor's Office, Karen Swoe, was able to be there. And, you know, we all kind of hung out afterwards and talked just about how important SEL is when it comes to the safety of our schools. So, it was nice to have them there. Delivered donuts this morning to Jessie Beck, Echo Loader, Vaughn, and Wooster. And then got to see some Taxi Tops, which I'm sure President Holland will talk more about.
Great. Thank you. Great. Mentioned some of the things that I've been doing with some of the other trustees, which is wonderful. I also, yesterday, was able to attend the Office of Student Support Services Action Research Presentations, which were absolutely impressive. These are teams of teachers throughout the district and other staff members who have been working on several specific projects. And Superintendent was there, Chief of Staff was there, Deputy Superintendent, and lots of other folks. And, and when we get to that item on the agenda, I'm going to ask for a presentation of the board about those reports because they were so impressive. These folks have done tremendous amount of research, looked at national best practices and was just very, very impressed with that. Got to do a Facebook Live at the Teachers Warehouse for Community Donation Day last week. That was fun with, with some of our students and a teacher and some parents were there, so it was wonderful. Aaron Grossman, one of our Teachers of the Year, brought some of his students in and it was just a delight to see them. And I, anytime you go in that Teachers Warehouse, it's absolutely amazing what's there and what the community provides for our teachers. So, and we hope folks will come by, stop by. Is that tomorrow? Is that Thursday or Friday?
Friday.
Fri- Friday?
It's Thursday.
Friday. Okay. For the-
Warehouse?
Yes.
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday. Some people are saying Friday. Some people are Thursday. Okay. Sam, I was reading your lips. You aren't really awake, are you? But anyway, Teachers Warehouse is great. And then today, as Vice President Raymond mentioned, Superintendent Davis and I and others were with EDON and the EDON Foundation Board, who have generously provided for Taxi Tops to be decorated with our student artwork. And they had sixty-four entries this year, which is just remarkable.
Wow.
And picked one for high school, one for middle school, and one for elementary school. And they're all just wonderful, absolutely stunning. And talking with the middle schooler, Alan, who was the winner, he said that entering that contest and preparing for it and doing his artwork made him realize that what he wanted to do with his life was be an artist. And it just tells you the value of arts and education. So, that, that's enough for today. Superintendent Davis?
Thank you, and I am not going to repeat anything that we've already said, but I do want to talk about the coffee. The Council of Family Engagement had their meeting two weeks ago and we talked about bringing back our family-friendly equity walks. As we look at the work we're going to do around equity and diversity, what do those family-friendly walks look like as you walk into the school? And they've done a lot of work around that. And they will be bringing that back in the future for a presentation with some of that work. The staff was in Chicago around social-emotional learning and doing that national work and presenting. And of course, being thought leaders in that, we are proud of the work that we've done in Washoe. So, kudos to the team. Mostly, everybody's gone now. So, if you watched this or you listened to this, thank you for all that work. Participated in the statewide Safety Task Force for the governor. Just want to shout-out to our kids. Tyler from Student Advisory Board was a part of that and we had nine kids present. And I'll just say this, the superintendents didn't, we, we didn't even get to talk because the meeting, it was like five hours. The kids really gave authentic voice and I was so proud of Washoe County School District considering the state, we had nine kids and Clark only had two. And our kids were like at it, right? But I think it's because we provided them those opportunities and strengthened voices to get out what they feel and talk in an honest, authentic way. Multicultural Senior Recognition Night was last night. It was the seventh annual one and we had more participants than ever. It's the first time, like I think we hit a record-breaking four-hundred and something. Like the line kept going and going and going. Don't look at me like that. But truly, truly exciting. And then I'm just going to say a little bit about the Office of Student Support Action Research because I believe that is the work that we started like four years ago. Like how do we improve upon systems is when we received that West Ed report. And knowing that we've been tackling some of those things and then looking at the big picture, it is the four concepts that I'm not going to give them away since you're going to request something. But I think very good information.
You can give me the four because I forgot what the fourth one is. You can go through the four. It's okay.
No, I'm not going to give them away. But I think they're good things that we already work on. But the fourth thing is around apps. How do we connect with our families? And so we talked about a district-wide app.
Gotcha.
But looking at over-identification, looking at alternative education. And then I missed the third one.
Wraparound services.
Wraparound services, yes. But really good work already being done, but how do we further this work? So, that department is doing some amazing work. And I'll close with John, JJ, Vanjie, and Sam. Thank you for tonight because it is not easy bringing a board meeting to a school. I flagged John down in the blue, in the blue truck and he had chairs and he's like, I'm trying to pack up all this stuff. So, thank you for the work that it takes to bring a meeting here versus having it at, at the office. So, know that we appreciate you.
We do. We do. And I also want to acknowledge, Trustee Mayor is not here because as we all know, he is fiercely dedicated to our JR OTC programs. And there was a JR OTC program scheduled tonight. And he wanted to make sure that he, he came for the board meeting, but that he was there for the JR OTC. Is that the Galena one, I think, tonight?
Galena.
Yeah. That's why he had his Galena tie on.
He came for the Indian tacos.
Yeah, let's get that straight.
He's straight. This kid.
Let's get that straight. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. But I did want to acknowledge that, that he was here in spirit, but there because that's his fierce dedication. Okay, then let's move on to future agenda item requests. Does anyone have any future agenda item requests? Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. So, when, when Vice, or when President Holland and I did our trustee, Meet the Trustee event, there was a pretty good spirited discussion about the use of handheld devices like iPhones and iPads in classrooms. But note, we weren't quite sure exactly what the school district would allow. So, I thought a good future agenda, agenda item would be to know what are the current policies or administrative codes surrounding the use of handheld devices, both personal and district issued in Washoe County School District classrooms.
Okay, thank you. Any other future agenda item requests? Well, as I stated, I would love to have an agenda item come back for a presentation of the board on those reports, on the four topics that were mentioned by the superintendent. Over-identification of special education, alternative educational sites, wraparound and community services, and the district app. And a presentation about the research and also to tell us what the follow-up process will be for how those wonderful recommendations are reviewed and potentially implemented. Okay, anything else?
I do have something, Madam President.
Yes, Dr. Taylor?
One of the things that is, that's been in our strategic plan for a while is, is cultural competency training for everyone, including the board. And I don't know if we can do that at a meeting. Maybe we need a special meeting to do that from a board. But I think it's important, we agree that we certainly wanted to do it and as the leadership, it's important for us to do it.
Absolutely. We have to do it.
And so I don't know if we need to make that an agenda item to discuss it and schedule it, but I, I think we should go ahead and move forward with that. And then we can have a, at some point, have a presentation of how we're doing moving that across the district.
I, I don't want to step on council's toes and we're not supposed to have discussion on these items, but we will take that as direction and get it implemented.
Thank you.
Okay. You all right?
Sure.
He was reaching for the mic too. Look at him.
See how I did this?
Sure. You're the president, so.
I tried. I tried to just zip it right back in to not being discussion. Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes, Dr. Feimster?
Just real quickly, I'd like to take a look at, again, along with the strategic plan, I'd like to take a look at, at the percentage, percentages of times that we are at board meetings because there's, there's no way it could reflect what it should reflect. It's just statistically, you just can't do it. So, I would like to take a look at a different way of doing it. I know.
Oh, I think you, we're not, yeah, we're, I'm not discussing. I'm just clarifying that what Trustee Dr. Feimster wanted to revisit is the measurement in the strategic plan, how we're going to measure board engagement.
Well, what I want to say is that there shouldn't be one. That's what I want to-
But you want to bring that back for discussion with the board.
Right. Right. Because it's just like putting that up in a school setting. We wouldn't do that. So, just something I want to have a discussion on.
We'll bring it back for discussion. Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, is there any final public comment, JJ, from our huge audience of citizens and interested parties? Carlin, did you want to say anything? You came. Okay, all right. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting.